2021 to Water. And I will read the notice of the budget public hearing. The town council of the town of Watertown will hold a budget public hearing on Wednesday, April 21st, 2021 at 7:00 PM at Watertown High School Auditorium. Attendance will be limited to 133 in-person individuals. It's at 324 French Street, Watertown, Connecticut. To hear comments on the following proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 budgets. Town General Fund, $31,635,098. School General Fund, $47,939,863. For a total general fund of $79,574,961. Town Road Aid, $349,009. Water Operations, $1,791,755. Water Capital, $170,000. Sewer Operations, $1,862,905. Water and Sewer Debt, $175,000. Crestbrook Golf Operations, Local Capital Improvement, $153,041. And Debt Service Fund, $359,628. The meeting will be conducted in person and virtually. There is a link below to join the meeting virtually. And the passcode is given and the in-listen mode only is given and the webinar ID numbers and passcode are given. Anyone wishing to present written testimony may do so in writing prior to the hearing by emailing towncouncil@watertownct.org with Budget Public Hearing in the subject line. You may also present oral testimony at the public hearing in person or by utilizing the option to raise your hand in the Zoom application to alert the meeting organizer you wish to speak. Remember to unmute yourself when called upon. The return of notice, Town of Watertown Notice of Public Hearing. I hereby certify that on April 13th, 2021, I left a duplicate copy of the attached Notice of Budget Public Hearing Town of Watertown, Connecticut with Lisa Dalton, its town clerk. I further certify that on April 13th, 2021, I caused a copy of said Notice of Public Hearing to be published in the Republican American newspaper, which has a substantial circulation in said town. I further certify that on April 13th, 2021, I caused to be set upon the signpost or other exterior places nearest the office of the town clerk and all other places and signposts designated by the town, a written copy of said Notice of Public Hearing, signed by the Chair of the Watertown Town Council of the Town of Watertown. I further certify that all the above acts were done at least five days before the holding of the public hearing on April 21st, 2021, dated at Watertown, Connecticut, this 13th day of April, 2021. Mark A. Remo, Town Manager. Town Clerk Certification as to Notice of Public Hearing and Return of Notice. I hereby certify that the attached Notice of Public Hearing and the foregoing return of notice of budget public hearing are duly recorded in the records of the Town of Watertown, Connecticut, and that Mary Ann Rosa was Chair of the Town Council on the date the notice was signed and that Mark A. Remo was the Town Manager on the date of the return of notice was signed, dated at Watertown this 13th day of April, 2021. At this time, I would like to introduce Town Manager Mark Remo for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Tonight, this evening, I would like to give an overview of the requested 1% reduction of the Town Manager's recommended Town General Fund budget of $32,030,493. This 1% budget reduction equals $404,395, which reflects tonight's Town Council recommended Town General Fund budget of $31,635,098. Department Heads, Managers, and I collaboratively worked on these reductions. I would like to thank our Department Heads and Managers for making effort to find these cuts without cutting positions from this particular budget. I would like to point out that these cuts were not 1% across all departments. The majority of the cuts came from our larger departments such as Public Works, Parks, Police, and Fire. We go to the next slide, please. Out of our Finance, excuse me, our Finance Department, we cut $12,225. Planning and Zoning, we were able to reduce $4,300. The Fire Department, $11,200. Police Department, $32,200. Our Public Works, we were able to cut $235,500, or I'm sorry, $235,500. Park and Rec, $18,970. And our Vehicle Replacement Fund, which is funded for $150,000 for our Fire Department and $70,000 for our Public Works Department, we cut that by 50% and we cut that by $90,000. Just as a highlight for your information of some of the bigger cuts. In the Police Department, we were able to take out $21,000 from our IT positions, our maintenance agreements, that was reduced. One of the harder cuts that we made was through our Public Works Department. We took out $114,150 that was slated for a road repair that was, we're in need to get that done in the next couple of years. We also were able to cut $35,000 from Public Works, which is money that we had put set aside to close our landfill. We have been slated to be closed for a few years. We have not been given the green light to do that yet, but at some point, we're going to have to close that. Parks, we took out a $15,000 line item that was, we were going to use to put fencing in and around the playground for the children. And then, of course, just to reiterate that we did cut our vehicle replacement funds on both our Fire Department and our Public Works Department. Thank you.
To present the Police Department's budget proposal, I'd like to introduce Chief Joshua Berniger.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Josh Berniger, your Police Chief in Watertown. I have my slides on the screen, please. The budget presentation for the Watertown Police Department, next slide, please. This slide here reflects the Police Department's five budgets, including the 1% cut that was recently made at the request of the Town Council. I'm sorry, our six budgets. The top one, the Administrative Budget, is showing a $54,000 decrease from the previous year. The reason for this significant decrease is we had a significant IT infrastructure project budgeted in the current fiscal year within this budget, which the work has been completed and doesn't reflect in the proposal for the next fiscal year. The Patrol Detective Budget, as you can see, is the largest cost increase driver, and I will detail the $486,000 increase in that budget in a moment on the next slide. Not yet. Back one, please. The Maintenance and Support Budget is showing a nominal increase of just under $13,000. Our Traffic Budget is increasing by just $1,500. Our Animal Control Budget is showing a decrease. And our Communications Budget is nearly a $25,000 increase from last year. The total increase looking at 8.6% from the previous year. Now we can go to the next slide. Here we are. So payroll is our largest cost increase driver for the next fiscal year. The reason for this increase is the police union's collective bargaining agreement that expired in April of 2018. The successor agreement was just ratified late in 2020. Therefore, four years of negotiated pay increases are all coming together in one year for the next, for the 21, 22 fiscal year budget. That reflects 9.5% in overall pay raises over the course of those four years. That in itself accounts for approximately $353,000. With these pay increases, we must also increase the amount of the overtime budget because their salary is going up, which will, of course, increase when an officer works overtime. It's their hourly rate at time and a half. So the overtime budget has to increase with salary increases. And also, we are also getting a patrol K-9 in the coming year, and we will be having to pay the K-9 officer off-duty care and handling pay, which will come from the overtime fund. That's been increased by about $10,000 to account for that off-duty care and handling time for the K-9. Also, which has to increase with pay increases, is the holiday pay. Officers have to work on all the holidays as their hourly rate increases, so does the payout for their negotiated holiday pay in a contract. And that's approximately $16,000. And of course, the upcoming fiscal year, instead of having the normal 52 pay weeks, there is that additional pay week, which also will increase the budget for that one year. The Maintenance Agreements is probably the next biggest cost increase driver in the Police Department budget. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, we did a pretty significant IT infrastructure rebuild in the Police Department. We have all new servers, new switches, all new hardware, and a lot of new software that goes with these equipment, including a new online email platform, all of which takes both subscriptions and maintenance agreements to maintain this equipment. So there was some new costs involved in supporting this new equipment and the new software subscriptions, as well as including some expenses to have an outside IT consultant manage this new equipment. Our Communication Overtime increased by about $17,000. It's been underfunded. And the reason we're having a difficult time staying within the current allotment, which is about $43,000 a year for our communications personnel, which are our 911 emergency dispatchers, is our difficulty in retaining our part-time dispatch staff. It's a difficult position to fill and maintain. We are in the process of hiring two new part-time dispatchers now, which we hope to bring the overtime for Communications Budget under control. Needless to say, though, we're looking at approximately a $60,000 year next year in Communications overtime. That sums up the cost increase drivers for the Police Department. Next slide, please. So I know this was a brief presentation. I just wanted to hit on mainly why the Police Department budget looks so dramatic this year or next year over the current year. Again, it's the primarily the salary increases that were negotiated and four years of increases coming due all at one time. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Chief, you want questions now?
Your call, Madam Chairwoman.
Is there anyone that has a specific question for the Police Department? Bright light. It doesn't appear so. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce Robert Grandprey, our Highway Superintendent, and Paul Benevich, our Town Engineer, who will offer highlights of the Public Works Department budget.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Paul Benevich, Town Engineer. With me is Bob Grandprey. As Mary Ann Rosa said, we're, it's a two-team effort here to present the Public Works Department budget. As far as engineering goes, next, where's our slide, please? Yeah, next sheet, please. Next sheet, please. Okay, as far as engineering goes, we have some minor cuts from the 2020, 2021 budget, mostly minor cuts in training funds. So also, as the Chief mentioned, it's a 53-week pay period and the effects of the white-collar union contract, which is under negotiation, are known at this time. As far as highway goes, Bob?
Oh, ladies and gentlemen, Bob Grandprey, Superintendent of the Highway Department. For our highway budget, we decreased our amounts by eliminating some equipment replacement in the snow removal department. We have an increase due to an increase, proposed increase in the price of salt and an additional snow removal machine that will be used primarily by the Park Department. The Solid Waste Division, we have Mr. Remo touched on it about the our fees for closing the landfill that we hopefully will not need this year. And for street lighting, we we have electric lights. We have an electric bill that we're hoping will not increase. And we added money at first to cover any increase in the electric bill, and then we took it out to get down to our 1%. And for trees, we finished up a project at the old cemetery on Depot Street, so we no longer need the same amount of money. And that's it for decreases. Next slide. Our staffing has stayed exactly the same. That's pretty much the only thing on that slide that we haven't touched on. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of all of Public Works responsibilities. There's a few of these that'll be replaced this year. There's a couple culverts. And out of the catch basins that we take care of, we usually repair or replace about 100 of them a year. And as you know, last year, we got a new vac oil unit, so we can start cleaning our catch basins on a more regular basis. And detention basins, we usually clean them out a couple per year. And the storm sewer is the same thing. Our new vac oil unit that we bought will clean out all of the storm sewer pipes. And we hopefully will have a mile and a half more road once we get a couple more roads accepted. Other than that, everything should stay the same. Next slide, Mike.
It's just some highlights of the engineering programs were involved at the Lake Winnemawg Road, it's Sperry Road intersections, a dangerous intersection that we're trying to rehab. It's part of the 2019 bond funding. It's an in-house design that we're about halfway done with. The Sunset Avenue Drainage Project is a resident-funded project in Sunset and Watertown, whereas there's a drainage issue coming from the test test school detention basin under Middlebury Road. The Town Attorney is negotiating or negotiating with the homeowners for final agreements to get that done. The town is, or we're supplying some of the drainage pipe materials, but it's a it's a resident-funded project. Hungerford Avenue Reconstruction is a total reconstruction road and drainage from Bunkingham Street to Falls Avenue. That's under 2019 bond fund also. Falls Avenue Culvert Replacement near Wagon Wheel was just approved through Wetlands a couple of weeks ago, and it's part of the leftover money from 2013 bond funds. Depot Street Reconstruction is a mill and paving from French Street all the way to Main Street with some drainage improvements. It's also part of the 2019 bond funding. Wilson Street Bridge is also another 2019 bond project. It's an outside design. If there's some issues with the legal requirement, but it's still, I think it's 90% designed, and hopefully we can get the thing out this year for bid. Payment program, there's $750,000 for the next, each of the next three years in 2019 bond funding. Let's see, next sheet, please. Some more programs, the Lotsip Program, the Nogga Tuck River Greenway from Frost Street, Frost Street, Frost Bridge Road northerly to the Thomason Line, an almost two and a half mile section of the Greenway is part of the Lots Local Capital Transportation Capital Improvement Program that'll be 100% funded. Nogga Tuck Valley Council of Governments has applied for the state for that money. It's an in-house design. Engineering's doing it ourselves. Jersey Town at West is in consultant design, but that's there are some issues with deep about the land acquisition, but hopefully we can get that resolved and out this year. That's another 100% funded Lotsip program. The steep grant is for the lower portion of the Main Street roadside safety audit. Includes a sidewalk from Woodriff down to Starbucks to finish the loop there. The Community Connectivity Grant, that's the Bunker Hill Road sidewalk. It's mostly in Waterbury. We've done the survey for them. There's a very small portion, less than 10 feet in Watertown, but that's still subject to an MOU, method of understanding, that still has to be negotiated with between the Town and Waterbury. And oh, the Transportation Alternative Grant, the Streamboat Steel Brook Greenway, the next section from Unico to Frostbridge, French Street, is part of that grant. Highway programs, Bob, if you want to touch on those.
Catch Basin repairs, again, the catch basin repairs, like I said, we average. Sorry, Mike, next slide. Thank you. Catch Basin repairs. We usually do about 100 catch basin repairs a year. That includes catch basins on roads that we're about to repave. It includes catch basins that are just naturally falling apart and creating sinkholes and hazards. For our equipment replacement, we are asking for two dump trucks this year and one snow removal machine. The two dump trucks, one 10-wheel dump truck, 10-wheel plow truck with a wing. It's what we would call one of our prime moving machines for snow. It's a year-round truck with an all-season body. And the other truck is a smaller six-wheel truck. It's a low-profile, four-wheel-drive dump truck with three-yard body. And the snow removal machine is is a, I guess you would call it a multi-use machine. We intend on using it primarily for snow removal to run a snow blower and a snow plow, but it will carry almost any attachment you could think of. And that's it for highway. Thank you.
Continuing, completing this sheet, the Middlebury Road Vale, next section of the drainage project, this went out for bid and came in over budget. We're going to try to rework this and get it out for budget again soon. Part of the, I believe that's, well, that is the 2013 bond, part of that money left over. And the water, the Main Street RSA roadside safety audit, that's in the budget, $25,000 left for that. Next slide, please. The Local Capital Improvement Program right now, this is pavement rehab in Section 1. Bob, I forget exactly where that is. Other than Georgetown's. Okay, that's off of Buckingham Street, Upper Buckingham, right, correct. And Georgetown Drive, that's being rehab highways. Done most of the catch basins up there, and that's part of a Lotsip grant for Georgetown Drive repaving. Next slide, please. Bobby may want to touch on Town Road Aid.
Basically, like the slide shows, the progression of how we take care of the towns and the town roads, and we use the Town Road Aid to take care of that. All of, most all of these are handled by Public Works. A lot of this is handled by highway whenever we can, including the signs and rails, asphalt repairs. Occasionally, the sidewalks fall under highway, but more often than not, they're handled by outside contractors. Just like the chip seal, the crack seal, also handled by outside contractors, but all managed by the Public Works Engineering Department.
Just one, just one final note, the Woodriff Avenue sidewalk you see on there is the last part of the loop from Academy Hill to the end where we left off halfway up the block on Woodriff from from the turn down there from St. John's School, and that's in the budget for that money, so. Any questions from anybody? That's our presentation.
Thank you very much. We're going to hold questions till the end because I'm realizing that's the only microphone we have for the public. So when we move it down to the floor, then we will take questions. Thank you. And we move on now to the presentation by our Fire Chief, David Bromley, on the Fire Department budget, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Bromley, Jr. I'm the Fire Chief, resident at AD Hickory Lane in Watertown. This is our 2021 budget, 22. Next slide. We are volunteer fire department. Most of the residents of the town believe we act as a full-time department. We respond quickly and efficiently to every call. And I'm very proud of my volunteers that, what they do every day, day in and day out. If the town were to have to have, go to a full-time department, you're looking at a $6 million cost, which your volunteers are saving the town currently. Next slide. It's our current staff, excuse me, our current apparatus inventory. We have four engines, one tanker, two aerial letters, rescue, utility brush truck, three EMS units, two utility rehabs, three command cars, two fire marshal cars, an ATV, two trailers, a rescue boat, and an ice boat, which are ready to respond daily. Next slide. Some of the things we do daily is vehicle extrication, live fire training, and our medicals. Currently, the volunteer firefighters last year alone spent 3,500 hours in volunteer training. This is during a pandemic that they completed this and continue to do the training to increase the benefits of the town. Next slide. We do public education yearly to volunteer firefighters, videos, daycare, preschool, grammar school, and parochial school during Fire Prevention Week to host an open house as well, so public can learn what we do at the firehouse. Hopefully this year, we can do that again barring any COVID changes. Next slide. Last year, the department responded to 2,554 fire rescue and EMS calls. As you can see, that was a bad accident on Main Street at Echo Lake Road and a tractor-trailer fire on the Main Street by Mark's Garden Center. Next slide. This year, we have an issue with our air packs, our self-contained breathing apparatus. We asked for $21,000 to increase what we needed for that line item. Unfortunately, that line item was cut to $4,000. We do have a grant in place that we're trying to get. This is our second round, trying to get it. We're hoping that we can somehow get this grant and be able to purchase it. Otherwise, we're looking at close to $500,000 to replace our air packs that are in need of replacement. Next slide. This is our current ladder two, which is This is our current ladder two, which is stationed at Buckingham Street. It's a 1992 Simon duplex. It's vastly approaching 30 years old next year. Currently, this truck is in good shape. But the problem is every time it breaks down, we have problems getting parts because of it. The engine alone in the truck hasn't been made in 20 years and the parts are very scarce to get it. So we're looking, we asked for a bond issue on this, 1.35 million dollars, which was cut in this year's budget. Excellent. This is our engine one, which is due for replacement and FPA recommends that fire trucks are replaced on a 25-year period. This truck is going to be approaching that right now. Right now, we're looking at the $150,000 replacement fund, which now has been decreased to 75 this year. We were hoping if we got the fund this year and next year, we're going to be able to replace this truck in 2023, which would make it 26 years old at that time. Now that it's been cut in half and hopefully we don't know what's going to happen next year. This truck may not be replaced until it's 28 years old or 29 years old. We're hoping that that money somehow gets replaced back into the budget. Next slide. This was my request this year for the budget. We requested 2.385 million dollars. Most of that was in that new ladder truck. Our salary for page 26, the administrative administrators, that has stayed the same. Our $15,000 for our low set program, which is a retention and recruitment program for volunteer firefighters, which gives them a 401 plan in the department with the program that we do. We requested 15,000, it's been cut down to 7,500. We this year got a procurement of a Lucas 3 CPR device, which has already saved one life. That is an additional budget of $5,900 that was added to the account this year. That stayed, remained the same. We had asked for more medical supplies due to the COVID increase and that was cut down to 1,500. Like I said, the 2,100 have been requested for the self-contained breathing apparatus was, was bound down to 4,000. The binding issue was cut. We have been reduced in our postage by $1,000 and our physical medical services by 1,200. The medical services I agreed with because this past year, the medical services are for firefighter physicals. What happened with COVID is we couldn't do the physical, so there was money incurred from last year into this year. So we were able to give us some of that money back. With the additional costs that we incurred and everything that's going on with COVID, you're now down to 998,995 for this year's operating budget, which is $10,324 less than our operating budget this year. So we've taken a cut in our budget. We can manage it, I hope. Hope it is here and hopefully we get rid of it soon. Next slide. Next slide. Your fire department is always ready to respond. Any call, every day and night. Thank you.
At this time, we'll ask the Board of Education, our superintendent, Dr. Bill Anoeba, to discuss the Board of Ed budget with us, if you would.
Thank you. Hello, members of the Board of Education, Watertown Town Council members, fellow Watertown Town leaders and Watertown community members and Watertown Public Schools educators who are here this evening. I am eager to present our BEE recommended budget for the FY '22 year. To, next, sorry. To begin, I would like to thank all members of the Board of Education and next, and to the entire administrative team. You can go to the next slide there. In the Watertown Public Schools for working with me these past weeks and answering questions and providing context about the history of Watertown. So the decisions that were made with, that were made, were made with great care and consideration. As I move through this evening's presentation, I will share areas where cuts will be made. And next, this past year, the Watertown Public Schools have really demonstrated exactly what it means to be adaptable, to be flexible and resilient every day. With the pandemic at hand and practices that we've never had to do before. Things like wearing masks or socially distancing from one another. The Watertown Public Schools, even our youngest children, continued to get creative on what teaching and learning would look like every day. No matter what was thrown their way, any good educator knew and every student could feel that when they came to school and they were socially, emotionally supported and they felt safe, or that when they came to school to be engaged, the curriculum and teaching and learning experiences. And that they were engaged with the creative content that their teachers were providing for them in their classrooms. They knew they were experiencing an excellent education here in Watertown. Next, the Watertown Public Schools budget is the very vehicle that allows us as a district to provide these continuous experiences and everything entailed in creating these times for our students year after year. The Watertown Public Schools strategic plan and improvement plan is one that offers a clear path and a view to where our district is headed. We know that we want our students not only to be knowledgeable in content, but also to have the characteristics and the skills of the students and the people that we want them to grow up and be when they leave our schools. Ultimately, our strategic plan is like a puzzle. And putting the pieces together is how we get our students to where we need them to be. And it's no question that this past year has been an extraordinary one. And there have been many, many moments where there has been new and continuously changing information and moments where it was hard to find our footing. And so knowing this, this year's proposed budget aims to steady the ship and to bring back to spending some time on growing the good work that all of our schools do on a daily basis. This budget is also prioritizing the mitigation and the potential risks that next year bring us as well. Because we don't see COVID ending quite just yet. And so the priorities aim to really steady our foundation. Next. The budget process is a collaborative one and includes many people from across the district, all of our bargaining units, as well as all the people that go to make our district work each day. It's trickier in a global pandemic. And so I would like to just acknowledge that it was very important when we were putting this budget together that we prepared to reduce possible risks straight out of the gate. We knew that, to consider all of the knowns, to try to figure out as many unknowns. And then, of course, to staunchly protect what we currently have. This does not mean, however, that we stopped innovating or we weren't growing our creative ideas. It just meant that we were proceeding with greater caution this year. Next. Watertown Public School Strategic Plan has three areas of focus. Watertown Cares, Watertown Learns and Watertown Leads. And this year's proposed budget includes specific key additions to each of these areas so that we can fulfill these goals. Next. And so I'd like to begin by stating that this year's total recommended budget is $48,439,863, which gives a total increase of $1,861,273 or a total percentage increase of 4%. With the requested reduction of $500,000, the total reduced budget will be $47,939,863 or a 2.92% increase, which is a dollar increase of $1,361,273, which I will speak more to as I move throughout the presentation. Next. Salaries and benefits make up 76% of all Watertown Public Schools budget. It's the people. We are a people business in our school district. And it is the capital of our faculty and our non-certified staff that provide the educational opportunities for our students and for our families. The pie chart, I, for me, as a visual learner, is always the, the best for me. The colors are helpful. It really shows just how each slice is carved out for our district. So what you see here is 76% again for those salaries and benefits. Three and 2% of the overall budget for maintenance and utilities, transportation coming in at 4%. And then you see really that the only thing left over there is 2%, a very small pie slice. And that means for everything else, supplies, materials, equipment, technology, all of that. Next. You may have thought that I forgot apply slice and that was the gray one. It's important to know that our special education costs, which is our second largest cost in the district, has, have increased substantially and drastically. I use those words specifically. And it is my strong belief and commitment to build a strong educational experience for all of our students that we need to appropriately fund our school district. And so to provide a little context, I shared that in just one year, special education costs, so that includes tuition, professional technical services and transportation increased by 3% alone, just for special education. That was a dollar amount of $1,808,204 to total, a total of $6,567,074 just for FY '22. At the same time, I, I must notify the public that the federal and state special education funding still only covers a portion of what we spend for the services that we provide for our children. This is where steadying the ship is really important. And so appropriately building in the funds to build a strong foundation for not only our special education programs, but for all of our students is important. Next. Again, just because I'm a visual learner of the recommended increase, the red signifies all that would go towards special education increase and that blue slice would be what would be left over for everything else. So to not come in with an increase that was dramatically in 10% or something like that, because that would just be crazy. You can go next. We already had initial cuts into the budget to get to our recommended 4% increase. Again, going back to those areas of focus, our district improvement plan is organized through the three areas, Watertown Cares, where we will look at our special education programming to extend and to grow it from the middle school into the high school, which we look to call the Watertown Soar. In Watertown Learns, we were looking to expand our course selection to include more trades courses. And that would mean more personnel, but at this time with cuts, we will not be moving forward with that. With Watertown Leads, we look to the partnership of where we are with our town and to the folks who make Watertown what it is. And we were looking to have a shared human resources position where at this point in time, we won't be able to move forward with that. So these items specifically would help drive our school district towards our strategic plan and again appropriately fund next year. Next. In addition, of course, for schools, this is something we think about all the time, enrollment and class size. We watch this like a hawk very closely. We know that smaller class sizes benefit children and educators alike. We also know that monitoring class sizes before and after and during school is absolutely necessary and we will continue to do so. And this will be impacted by some of the reductions that I am recommending this evening. Next. Technology, this has come up in a couple of our department presentations already, is something after this year of COVID, we all know technology is absolutely critical. Right now, we are in an infrastructure of a one gig technology highway, if I could call it that. And we need to move to 10 gigs. I certainly would rather be driving on a 10, 10-lane highway. This would also help reduce any possible risks of cybersecurity attacks, which we did experience last year. Any extreme technology outages where we then would flip into either remote learning or not have learning at all because of that. And this is something that needs to be planned over time because it's a big project. And we also know, next, that learning moves beyond the school day and beyond the walls of our schools. And so we've heard a large outcry from our parent population about summer enrichment programs, particularly after you're coming off of COVID when our students' learning has been interrupted because of the pandemic. This is something that we were looking to offer as a low tuition experience for some of our students. And at this point, this would be impacted by our reductions. Next. And so at this time, I like to call it kind of the fabric of funding for a school district, like a quilt. We get federal and state funds, next, thank you, that come in the form of grants that cannot be used for the general operating budget. You can go to the next slide there. Thank you. And these grants come in the form so that we can specifically offset our cost for specific programming, services, student needs and building requirements. And that happens each and every budget year. And so taking all of our streams of revenue into consideration, next, the school district recommends a budget of $48,439,843. With an additional $500,000 reduction, the Watertown Public Schools will need to make additional personnel, personnel reductions by, next, eliminating 26.5 people from our workforce, which come in the place of 11 pair of professionals altogether, one custodian, five interns, 1.5 security guards, 4.5 classroom teachers, 2.5 library clerks and one HR specialist. And we can go to the next one. And in addition to personnel, we will also have to impact resources and materials. And so you can see the dollar amounts there where you see 75,000, the 45K and the 30K added together for instructional supplies. 12,000 for additional custodial supplies and cleaning and building and maintenance. 90,000 for contracted services would be reduced. $42.5,000 would be reduced in terms of substitutes licensing mileage. And again, the summer enrichment program and library books. This is ultimately what $500,000 in addition to where we are looks like. And these are what I am recommending this evening. And if you could go to the next slide, please. I thank you for your time. And if there are any questions this evening, I would be happy to provide as much information as possible.
That concludes the presentations on the town and the Board of Education budgets. So to cap it all, what we're talking about at this time is a total general fund increase of 2.45%, which is an increase in the mill rate of 1.26. What does that mean in dollars? It means if you have a home that's valued assessed at $166,276, you're going to be paying an additional $209 in the year. That's with the Board of Ed cut and with the town's cut as it currently is before you. We are now going to allow anyone from the public that would like to speak. We would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less. And then we'll have an opportunity for any council person that would like to talk or any Board of Ed person. And we will take questions. So we're going to have to move the microphone from up here to down below. And I have approximately 15 emails that came in with written comments that we're going to read into the record. So maybe we should do that first and get those out of the way.
Apologize in advance if I mess up any of these names. First email, my name is Pauline Brunetti. And I am writing on behalf of myself and my husband Eric. I have three children attend Watertown Public Schools. We are writing to ask that additional cuts not be made to the school budget. Larger class sizes take away from individualized time that teachers can spend with students who need a little extra help. And this would have a detrimental, detrimental effect. Oh, sorry. We also like the fact that our schools have resource officers and would hate to see these positions getting cut. Please don't make any more cuts to the school budget. Sincerely, Pauline and Eric Brunetti. This is from Jessica and Charles Bryant. We are writing in reference to the proposed school budget cuts. It is sad in that to see this. Sorry, saddened to see this. Our school system is so important and one of the reasons we moved to Watertown. We owe it to our kids, our future leaders to provide them with more than just basic instructional supplies like paper. Losing security guards during these uneasy times and with craziness of the world is very upsetting. Having to take away teachers and increase class sizes because of cuts is also awful. Class sizes of twenty four plus is way too large. I mean, we need these extra teachers and the ability to fund them. COVID is not over yet and we need to be able to do as much as we can to continue keeping our children safe. We have all been through so much in the last year and now now expecting our school system to function with even less funding is unrealistic. Please consider the funding of our school budget. Our children, our children need to be the priority. Thank you, Jessica and Charles Bryant. This is from Linda Moreno. I am deeply saddened to learn about the impact that the additional five hundred thousand dollar requested cut requested by the town council will have on our staff and students in Watertown Public Schools. Behind every position is a person and I'm heartbroken that many of our committed employees who have served Watertown Public Schools for decades will no longer be able to impact the learning of our students. Being in the Watertown school system myself for over twenty one years and also a long time Watertown resident, I have seen many changes due to budget cuts and the history has shown us that once a position is cut, it is never reinstated. Each step backwards has a direct effect on our students' education and their future. I respectfully ask that the town council reinstate the five hundred thousand dollars to the Board of Education budget. By doing so, you will sorry, by doing so, you have the ability to make a positive impact on each and every one of our students. Thank you for your consideration, Linda Moreno. This is from Diane Share, Share. Dear Town Council members and one of the library secretaries being let go. Enclosed, please find a letter I have written. I know this is not a situation you as members of the town council would like to be in and for that I am sorry. I sincerely hope you find other alternatives for saving money. Thank you for your time, Diane Share. I don't have the attachment. This is from Tracy Elliott. Dear Town Council members, I am writing to request that you please leave the Board of Education budget at the recommended figure and not require an additional cut. While I realize that the past year has required all of us to tighten our belts, I hope that you can try to find the cuts elsewhere. The children of this town should not be the ones to bear the brunt of our economic shortcomings. Thank you for your consideration and for your dedication to our community. Tracy Elliott. This is from either looks like it's Amy Swingle. Please cut the Board of Education budget by five hundred thousand dollars. We are in agreement with the town council that this proposed budget needs to be cut. Thank you. Sent by Amy Swingle. This was from Marissa Sullivan. To whom it may concern, the Watertown Oakville are sought after communities thanks to our public schools. This is certainly due to the fantastic teachers, leaders and staff and we, the voters who every year have our say on the budget. This is as it should be. We decide if and how to pay for the things we demand from the schools such as small class sizes, good test scores and teachers who help put our children on the path to success. This partnership between board, council and taxpayers has produced lean budgets that have built strong schools. Tax years proposed school budget is higher than the last few, largely largely because the spikes in COVID expenses, special education, and in fact, the governor Lamont mandated that schools pay bus contracts at full freight, even though the buses were idled. We will get some federally to help the COVID, help with COVID and we have to pay for special education, but we also have to make sure the schools are strong across the board. We will soon go to the polls again on the budgets. Before that happens, the town council will hold a public hearing on April twenty first. That is why I'm writing now to support restoring some of the recommended five hundred thousand dollar cut to the school budget that the council wants to make. We can all use a break in our taxes for sure. And this year's school budget is higher than in the past. But we have to make sure we stay on track with the steady progress our schools have made. Yours truly, Marissa Sullivan. This is from Jen. Don't have a last name. Grable, Jen Grable. These cuts do not impact all kids equally. These cuts will impact class sizes as well as security positions. Dr. V asked for what was necessary. Our kids deserve more and we are not protected by the law, the same as special education students do what's right. This is from James Singletary. My name is Jim Singletary. I live at forty six Inns Road in Watertown. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to comment on the town budget. I am writing to encourage the town council to reinstate the cut funding, reinstate the cut funding to the school budget. I understand your goal of keeping our proposed budget increased both reasonably and to what you expect may pass during the referendum. However, reducing the requested school budget is not an appropriate means of doing so. The long term impacts of the reduction will be felt many years longer than the current budget year, eventually costing the town more and or forcing an even bigger increase in future years. Yes, the school budget request is higher than last year. However, there are uncontrolled costs such as those pertaining to special education that are different each year, which take up funds that would otherwise be used in different line items. Other problem with the method of proposing what may pass is that is that should the referendum vote down the budget, then you are forced to further cut an already detrimental detrimental budget. I implore you to restore the funding back to the school budget and support it publicly for the good of the town. If the referendum votes it down, then at least you will leave tonight knowing you're supported, supported the town as you have been elected to do and put forth a budget that is worth standing behind. Respectfully, James R. Singletary. The last one is from Diane Shear. Oh, is the attachment. Okay. Sorry about that. Dear Town Council members, I have been involved in the Watertown School District for the last thirty years. Twenty of those years I have been secretary at either Swift Middle School or Judson School. Previous to that, I was involved as a room mother and PTA officers, et cetera, for my two sons' classes. I have a love for books, therefore, therefore, for the last twenty years, I have wanted to have a position in the library. The library secretary retired last year at Judson slash Polk. I applied and got the position. Finally, I was in, I was in. Then COVID happened and out went any normality in the library, but at least I had a position I love and wanted. After twenty years now only to be let go. Perhaps one doesn't feel the library is important or meaningful, but for many students it is. It is a place that may many need. I try to make the library at Polk and Judson a cheerful, stress-free place where they could come to relax if needed during the day. I have pairs bring their students into the library when they need to de-escalate and calm down. Not to mention, the purpose of the library is to provide resources and services to meet the needs of students. Excuse me, and it being one of the specials. I try to bring attention of different authors and books to students that may be of interest to them, but they are not aware of. Not to mention the many duties and responsibilities which I am performing during the day that the library media specialist doesn't have time for. The library media specialist is regularly teaching six classes a day, three at each school. She doesn't have time to do library management. Next year, when the maker space program for one, among other programs that are reinstated, hopefully due to no COVID restrictions. There is a lot of hands on. The library media specialist doesn't have the time to set up, work with every student which the projects require, clean up and set up for the next class. There are many things that make a library a good library due to a library secretary or clerk. I'd really hate to see the position eliminated next year. From experience, once a position is eliminated, it usually is never reinstated. I don't want the library to be a thing of the past. I feel it is very important. If I may speak for other library secretaries or clerks, we are assets to library and not just members, not just numbers. So we love what we do. Therefore, I wish you would really reconsider eliminating our positions. I would really hate to see my years in the town of Watertown end like this. Is the small percentage saved worth the elimination of twenty six point five loyal employees that love what they do? Thank you in advance for considering other options and for your time. Sincerely, Diane Share.
The first email that I have to read is from Holly and Joe Bemonte. Dear council members, my husband and I moved to Oakville in two thousand and six and have remained in town to raise our daughter, who is currently at John Trumble. It saddens us to see that the town is trying to cut five hundred thousand dollars from the board of ed budget. The cuts proposed are both fighting and seemingly unrealistic. First off, with the current climate of our society is more critical than ever to have a strong school system and learning environment. The increase in violence seen all over the news and even in our own neighborhoods does not lead me to feel that taking away security guards is a smart way to cut costs. Making class sizes bigger with less teachers and other personnel in the schools in conjunction with this loss of security in schools is certainly not going to keep our children safe or create an environment conducive to learning. We would like it put on record that we feel the town council should reconsider these cuts by either reinstating the school budget or at the very least significantly reducing the amount expected to be cut. We feel that having a strong school system is part of why we have such a great community. And without a strong school system, people are not likely to stay in town or look to move into our town. Thank you for your time and of course, all the work you do to keep our town great. Sincerely, Holly and Joe Bemonte. The next one is from Kathy Lubitsky. To whom it may concern. I'm writing today to express my concern with the additional cuts that are being recommended by the superintendent at tomorrow's hearing. The first item on the list is a cut of one point five security guards. As someone who lost a family member at Sandy Hook, I feel this is one of the last resources we should be removing from our schools. Every day on the news, we see more and more school violence. Today being the anniversary of one of the first and worst school shootings, Columbine, everyone thinks it won't happen in their school, but our town recently had a case of stalking and violence. Just don't see, I just don't see how cutting any sort of security or extra level of protection for our children could be considered a good idea. I also see that there is a recommended cut of four point five additional teachers, which would directly impact class sizes. After last year, after the last year we have had, it feels like the worst time imaginable to increase class size. While some students excelled at remote learning, others struggled and will need extra help to stay on track. Increasing the teacher to student ratio is just going to make that adjustment even harder on the students and staff. I cannot give enough praise to my daughter's first and second grade teachers during this pandemic. All teachers went above and beyond the call of duty this past year. And taking away additional funds for instructional supplies feels like we're doing the opposite of supporting these amazing teachers and staff members. During my daughter's parent teacher conference, I requested that I be notified of any additional enrichment programs that could further my daughter's education. She is reading past grade level and seeing these cuts make it obvious why there are no programs for advanced students. Lastly, seeing a cut to custodial funds and staff during a global pandemic also makes me nervous. Many teachers and staff will be vaccinated, but our children will not be. Even though children may not get as sick as adults, it's not a risk we should be taking. Thank you for your time and your consideration, Kathy Lubitsky. The next email is from Julia Hayes. Good evening. My name is Julia Hayes and I live at ninety Breezy Knoll Drive in Watertown. I would like to share my opinion on the current budget that stands before us. I am in disagreement with a four percent increase at this time. A time when many of our townspeople have been suffering financial losses due to the COVID pandemic. I completely understand that you have contractual obligations you must adhere to and consider. However, I still find myself in disbelief that a four percent increase would even be considered. In fact, I find it neglectful to even suggest such an increase during such times when families are struggling through such financial burdens. There must be a better solution. I'm also in disbelief that cutting hours of security personnel is even an option. The safety and security of our children are in your hands when they are in your care. It has been proven and mentioned by this town how the relationship the students receive by the resource officers is beneficial to not only their security, but their mental health as well. The majority of the community has had to make cuts to make ends meet this past year. Never would we consider cutting the safety needs of our family or loved ones, especially when there is such criminal activities happening in the world today. And as you very well know, right here in our town as well. I respectfully ask you not to cut the hours of the resource officers. I understand cuts will need to be made somewhere. I admit I do not have all the answers or even a solution to offer. However, I do believe you can find other cuts that can be made that will not affect the daily operations of giving our children the education it needs. At this time, I oppose to, I am opposed to a four percent increase and I respectfully ask that you reevaluate and make changes to the proposed budget. Thank you, Julia Hayes. The next one is from Nicole Pieria. Dear Town Council, as a taxpayer of Watertown for almost seven years and a parent of two students in the Watertown school system, I am extremely disappointed that the town council would require the Board of Education to reduce the budget by five hundred thousand dollars prior to the town referendum. It is the responsibility of taxpayers and voters to approve the proposed four percent Board of Education budget increase or not. The directive to cut five hundred thousand from the budget puts our students and teachers' health, safety and education at an extreme risk. As the four percent increase is mainly related to special ed expenses, which are required by law and given the need in town. We moved to Watertown because we love the community and the school system. The proposed reduction budget is going to be a deterrent, not only to the education of the children, but to our entire community. Over the past year, all of the students and teachers have been put in unprecedented learning environments, making sacrifices to ensure our students are learning and flourishing as best they can during a pandemic. To reduce the number of educators and paraprofessionals, increase class sizes and eliminate all learning materials besides paper is an absolute disgrace. This reduction budget is going to prevent our children from getting the This reduction budget is going to prevent our children from getting the most out of their education at key developmental stages, especially when they have already dealt with these extraordinary challenges for over a year. Security is an essential part of the school environment. To know there are qualified security guards who care for the students, teachers and staff and are willing to protect them if an incident occurs or to ensure their safety getting into the school in the morning and a pickup in the afternoon is indispensable. In the society we live in, there is always a fear that an incident could occur at school. And to know that there is a security guard on scene is not only a deterrent for an incident, but also a vital resource to protect our schools. The security guards build relationships with the students, parents, staff and teachers, which we know these relationships are vital for in-school incidents, but can assist without a school incident like the event that took place this past March. I ask your Town Council to reinstate the proposed Board of Ed budget with a four percent increase to be submitted to town referendum and let the taxpayers, voters and Watertown community decide what and how to invest our tax dollars. Sincerely, Watertown taxpayer and parent of Watertown students, Nicole Pieria. The next one is from Leslie War- Wharton. I'm writing to express my opposition to your cut to the school budget. It is unfortunate that special ed costs have skyrocketed and cannot be cut. But to penalize the remainder of the student body is not an answer. When I first moved to Watertown, its school system had a good reputation that helped raise property values. That reputation has deteriorated over the years, particularly in recent years, such that is no longer competitive or attractive or keeping good teachers and administrators. As more and more experienced teachers retire, other towns will outcompete us for the best replacements and the deterioration of our educational system will accelerate. The five hundred thousand dollar cut may penny maybe penny wise, but is certainly pound foolish. Put the money back in the budget. Sincerely, Leslie Wharton, ninety-five Cape Well Avenue. And the next one is from Mindy Davidson. Good evening. My name is Mindy Davidson and I am here to urge you to give back the monies taken from the proposed Board of Ed budget. I want to begin by saying that I have two children in the Watertown school system and have lived here close to twenty-one years. Back when I chose this town to settle down and raise my children, I remembered that Polk was named after one of the top elementary schools in Connecticut. The plaque hangs in the main hall of Polk with pride. But as we all know, times have changed. I am on several committees, sit on a board or two and work a few different jobs. But the one I have loved the most and the most proud of is to have held, is to have worked as a substitute teacher for the Watertown Board of Education. I got to see a little more than you may on an average day. I got to see the most incredible light in a child's eye when they finally comprehend that math problem they just didn't understand. I got to see them smile from ear to ear when they were clapped for after giving their position on a debate. I got to see the sigh of relief when they passed that science test with flying colors that they were so worried about. But then also get to see them stare in awe at the experiment that was just created. You see, my day sometimes got to consist of teaching some of your children, grandchildren, nieces or nephews, and I just loved it. It made me feel amazing, as I am sure it does all of the incredibly devoted teachers we have in all of our five schools. They do this every day for the children and for us, the parents. There's another side though, one that is not full of all the same sunshine. It is the process where we need to ask for money for obvious reasons every single season. I won't go into every detail. You've heard it all before, but what I want to touch on simply is to ask you to help us keep the light on in each child's eye and mind to be able to hear their questions, teach that lesson with the same tenacity we have now, to just be able to observe their process. We can't do that with class sizes that require more desks and floor space. Or dare I say, just as important, if not move computers and software that actually bring up the lesson we need to teach. Imagine the simple frustration, if you will, that you just calmed down twenty-five children. It's quiet. You start your day and your computer just won't load any document you need for that lesson. From the parent's side, I ask that you remember at one point you may have had or still have a family member in our schools. We're proud to say you graduated from Watertown School System. I'm sure I sure hope they are proud. I want to be able to say that same phrase. I know that our Board of Ed is working weekly, daily and even hourly to make this happen. I see it in the schools when they walk the halls to check on the safety of our children. In light of recent events in our town, cutting team members is detrimental to our children. And a team member is exactly what they are. The team of security guards, teachers, paraprofessionals, secretaries. They make it work every day. They work together to make the experience be exactly what your child needs and what my child needs. We need your help. It is that simple. Every taxpaying member of this town, each and every one of you makes a difference every day in a child's life. May not know it or realize it, but something as simple as listening to them tell a story can make their day. And something as major as passing this budget will keep the light going in their eyes. Please help the children in the town of today to become our future leaders of tomorrow. Someday, my friends, they will sit at that table and they will sit with pride in this audience. And they will say, my kids will be going to Watertown Schools. Help them make a difference. I'll leave you with a quote just to make you think for a moment. Donald Quinn once said, if a doctor, lawyer or dentist had twenty-five people in his office at one time, all of whom had different needs, some of whom didn't want to be there and were causing trouble. And the doctor, lawyer or dentist without assistance had to treat them all with professional excellence for nine months, then he might have had some conception of the classroom teacher's job. Thank you. That's for the written comments that we receive via the Town Council email, which we promised we would read into the record so that all those voices could be heard. Now we have public here and we also, I'm sure, have people listening virtually that may want to comment. So if the person would like to come up to the microphone and identify themselves, we'll be glad to move on. Please give us your name and address if you would be so kind.
Sure. My name is Becky Zavvo. I am at two twenty-six Beach Avenue. I have actually two letters I'd like to read. One is on behalf of Judson PTO Board. Dear council members, together as a school community, we ask you to please restore the five hundred thousand dollars that you've cut from the education budget for this fiscal upcoming fiscal year. Our children have had to learn in extreme circumstances and missed so many rites and passages that we all have the privilege to partake in. With the mitigating recommendations that are forecasted for the next school year, we cannot lose classrooms. Many classrooms are not built to accommodate the number of children with social distancing guidelines. Should we increase class size, which is exactly what will happen if these cuts are not reinstated? We would also like to point out social, emotional, mental health impact of remote learning will continue to be felt for years to come. We have this opportunity to minimize this problem by keeping our children in school where they are learning, eating, thriving emotionally, physically and intellectually. We expect our children to attend school to intent, to attend in-school learning next year and hope that you feel the same way. We ask you to consider that our children returning to school for in-person learning be your priority. Thank you for your service to our town. This is submitted by myself, Becky Zavvo, Cara Edwards, Judson PTO Vice President, Stacy Romano, Judson Treasurer, Megan Lynn, Judson Secretary and the members at large, Amy Thurston, Michelle Young, Kristen Antonucci, Cara Major, Ally Damaris, Anna Kiernan and Odette Samoas. I just felt that I needed to add a little bit more about my own personal opinion and I am also asking you to reinstate this money. As a lifelong citizen of Watertown, I understand that costs keep rising and I find myself saying enough is enough. But I also feel that twenty-five years ago, I had more of an opportunity as a student than my children do. I don't think that's acceptable. I stop and I say, I have to do the right things for the right reasons. Education is not a choice. It is a right. A right that Watertown has firmly provided for decades. These cuts to education budget would be tearing away the students' rights. We need to stop cutting from things that are our rights and may I suggest that we start looking at things that are our choice. I come from a data mindset. I am confronted with this, when I'm confronted with an issue, I try to look at data to help tell me the story. I've learned a lot over these past few days, looking at how towns present budgets and when more money is spent. Each school district is assigned to a district reference group, referred to as a DIRK. DIRKs are classified by letters A through I. With DIRK A consisting of very affluent low-needing suburban districts and DIRK I consisting of the state's urban, urban districts that have high socioeconomic needs. Watertown's reference, current reference group is D, I mean is C. Back in two thousand and six, we were D. We actually made headway. We we now are C. This information is meant to be helpful to make comparison among districts. We are twenty-three, we are, there are twenty-three schools in this district and out of the twenty-three schools, we have the sixth highest mill rate. But we spend the second least amount of money locally per pupil. This information got me thinking. Is there other areas that fall under individual choice that can be considered? We certainly need to be able to pave and plow our roads. We need to protect all of our citizens. I'm referring to other areas in our budget that residents would be able to pay for based on choice. We have such passionate residents that take great pride in Watertown. Please reconsider the cuts to this Board of Education. Because this is, education is where the foundation will start. I know you guys are faced with a very extremely challenging situation and I really do appreciate your service to our town.
Before we have another speaker, let me ask, is there anyone who has a question of any of the various departments that spoke so they can answer those first? No questions? Okay, then certainly, please continue with any statements.
Hi, my name is Allison Damaris, one sixteen Jason Avenue. I too am representing the John Trumbull PTO as well as my personal opinion. To whom this letter concerns from the PTO specifically our diligent Town Council and Board of Education, our Watertown Public School students, teachers, staff and administration. It is with solidarity that we, the Executive Board of John Trumbull PTO, express our deepest concerns regarding the proposed five hundred thousand cut from the Board of Ed budget for the fiscal year of twenty-one, twenty-two. Our desire to become and stay involved with this organization is based on our firm belief that education for our children is first and foremost right. And that though our efforts, we can prove, we can provide the best for their school. Our rigorous commitment to raise funds and support our faculty and staff through one of the most difficult and trying years in education will not stop. However, I feel like the rug has been pulled out from beneath our feet as we attempt to make up for shortcomings in our children's curriculum based on lack of funding from the very source that should be most reliable. Our operating budget is over twenty-seven thousand dollars. We have supported the curriculum through years and years of budget cuts. And we are at a tipping point where it is possible that we will leave the future board with less money than what is operable. We can only ask our parents and community supporters for so much. We call on a fair and favorable education budget. It is recognized that sacrifice when it comes to budget reform is necessary. However, we are not all willing to see our schools sacrifice anymore that they already have. Our children and teachers are socially, emotionally and physically strained. We thank all of those that have supported our organization through thick and thin as we work tirelessly in ingenuative ways to advocate for our school and curriculum with deepest gratitude, the PTO Board, myself as president, Carolyn Boynton, Vice President, Megan Lynn Treasurer, Sunny Olami, Corresponding Secretary, Shelley Lucius, Recording Secretary, Members at Large, Nicole Pereira, Beth Cordero, Melissa Rizza and Sabrina DePazza. Personally, as a mother, I stand before you as president of an organization that supports education at the youngest level in this town. And as the wife and sister of a Watertown fireman, an ICU-turned-hospice nurse in the middle of a pandemic. What we do every April and May to decide on a budget that can sustain this town is butt-wrenching and distasteful. I have a third grader at Judson, a second grader at John Trumbull. As we all stare down the barrel of what is to come with cuts to both sides of the budget, let it be known that it is never easy to take, never an easy task to face public safety versus investing in our education system. I'd rather a working fire truck than the back nine at Crestwood be maintained when my house is burning down. Twenty-one thousand dollars for six air packs that can save my husband's life in a fire is not a lot of money. The John Trumbull PTO spends close to fifteen thousand dollars to sustain programs like Scholastic, Pebble Go, Brain Pop and various other programs to enhance curriculum. All of these programs were essential to our COVID quarantine kits. And it continues to be used daily in the curriculum. My son, who struggled through traditional learning, found excitement and learning for once on these internet activities. There was concern that our PTO budget could not sustain these amenities going forward. But now even the town can't afford this. The new suggestion is to turn our students into full-time hybrid likely so that we can cut four point five teachers and eleven pairs. As a full-time nurse and a husband working as a career fighter, fighter and a volunteer fighter, fighter in this town, I'd like to know who takes on the role of paying my mortgage when I need to be a teacher at home. When we have dedicated teachers willing to do their job in our system. Teachers that showed up during quarantine where their four-year-olds on their lap, teaching three-digit math and poetry. Another concern as the polls of our nation is highlighted gun violence as a tagline. We are comfortable cutting one point five security guards. My shy nine-year-old has officer chip by his side. My outgoing eight-year-old shares her Kit Kats with Officer Andy. I am thirty-four. I have newly established friends looking for a permanent place to raise their families. They ask me what I think of Watertown and is it a great place to raise children? At first, my response was to run. Every April, we rip each other apart at the seams to disperse money to whom things they, it belongs to most. And then I think about our community coming together during tragedy, loss, happiness, pride. And I'm like, this is what Watertown is, a community full of pride, maybe too much pride and charity. And yet come spring, we pull each other apart fiscally. My final remarks aim at both the Board of Ed and the Town Council. In a thorough examination from the top down of salaries and funds allocated that would best be used somewhere else. Again, two years later, I revisit Crestwood's budget. Over seven hundred thousand dollars. Golf is a luxury. Education is a right. I look at administrators' pay versus our untenured teachers showing up daily in the trenches of educating our children. And as I stated in my previous speech, sacrifice is the ultimate price we must pay to ensure the future of Watertown is promising. Thank you.
Next speaker and remember, five minutes, please.
Mine is short and sweet. Good evening. I'm Karen Sturgis of seventy-two Orient Street. I'm also the president of the Paraprofessional Union. We have many of us represented tonight. Um, sorry, a little nervous here. I understand that you need to make cuts. We all do sometimes, but I'm asking you to reinstate the budget. You are thinking and treating the education and the future of our kids as a business. Children should never be thought of as a business. You are thinking and treating paraprofessionals as a line item in your expense report. We are much more than that. We are the glue that holds the classrooms and the schools together. We are important to all the children, not just the children with special needs. Are you aware of all that we do besides provide instructional and behavioral support? We cover lunch duties in the cafeterias, recess duties, bus dismissals as well as parent pickups. We feed and toilet those who cannot do it independently. We also cover classroom teachers as subs due to the lack of finding substitutes. If pairs are cut, who will do all of that? How many IEPs and five oh fours will not be met? And how many lawsuits are you willing to bring upon this town due to the IEPs not being met because of these cuts? Paraprofessionals are more than expense line item in your budget and these children deserve better. We are needed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Lawton, 46 Pine Street in Watertown. I grew up here in Watertown. I have roots in this community, and I currently have four children in the public school system, ranging from elementary through high school. Over my years in town, this is not new. We've watched over the years as arts have been cut, as positions have been cut, as sports have become pay-to-play, but have also seen recovery and facilities upgrades and curriculum upgrades, and have seen the strengths of Watertown. So to say, this certainly seems like a step backwards with the proposed cuts. We're not even cutting anything extraneous. We're looking at basic operational expenses for our kids. Not to be redundant, I'm sure it's going to keep coming up. We know that increased class sizes are not going to be helpful for our kids. We know that the costs of basic supplies are going to fall more so to the teachers and the parents. However, what I'd like to most stress tonight, and what really is concerning, is that I think this is, needs to be seen as part of the bigger picture. We're looking to skim half a million dollars from the school budget to put a Band-Aid on the current deficit and to reduce increases in the mill rate. But the long-term ramifications to our school system are much larger. The well-being of a community is greatly tied to the well-being of the school system. How can we expect Watertown to thrive when we cannot even invest in our schools? We struggle with empty storefronts and trying to rejuvenate local businesses. And I don't know how we can attract and to keep life in this town if we continue to take away from the rudimentary needs of our schools. How can we expect families to want to be in Watertown and put roots down here? I actually left Watertown for a few years and made the decision last year to move back here with my children. And I have stopped and wondered if somebody not in my position, who knows the strengths of this community, who has built their village here, would they make that same decision to come back with some of the changes that are taking place? And how can we expect our educators to say? Nobody wins in this proposal, not even our residents who don't have children in the public schools. This may temporarily balance numbers on paper, but it's a detrimental decision for our town as a whole. Ultimately, I think these proposed cuts send a strong message from our community. We're sending a message that over tenths of an increase in mill rate regarding the education budget, we do not value our educational system and the well-being of the town as a whole, including long-term growth. We're sending a message to our educators that we expect them to do more with less. And more than anything, we're sending a message to the youth of the town that we're not invested in hope and opportunity for their futures. I thank the Board of Ed, the school administrators, and Dr. Villanueva for all the energy put into this already, and the educators who I've been trusting my children with already, and ask that the Town Council reconsider the cuts that are proposed.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Kownhauser, 9 Caroline Circle in Oakville. I am the Vice President of the Polk PTO, but I'm just here as a mom of a third and fifth grader at Polk School. Town Council members, enough is enough. Year after year, our superintendents tell us that the driving cost of our school budget is special education. We are reminded that not only is it our moral obligation to educate students of all abilities, but legally, we are bound as well. We know these facts so well that we accept a nearly 0% increase in the budget for all other students. Year after year, piles of parents parade in front of you begging not for new books, not for lavish programs, but just for the status quo. Why? Because despite our legal and moral obligations, you seem determined to change the system, thinking you can drive down the cost of special education. Cutting the school budget can't do that, and it never takes away from all students equally. I would argue, it doesn't even take away from all students fairly. Our special education population is protected by law, but all other students bear the brunt of your reductions year after year. Town Council members, enough is enough. Dr. Villanueva was hired by our Board of Education, who was elected by our town. She isn't asking for anything but what is absolutely and legally necessary. Trust the people who know education to be doing the right thing for all students. Restore the proposed school budget in full. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Krista Colombo, 9 Cayuga Drive, Watertown. I feel the Board has come up with a realistic, yet still deficient budget that would only mean a 4% increase, and they are now being asked to reduce it by additional $500,000. We will now have fewer teachers and paraprofessionals, larger class sizes, less classroom help and resources for students with special needs, fewer supplies, and no meaningful teacher development. With the additional cuts being asked for, we will be, we will be cutting deep into the educational needs of our students. This is not the right time to make cuts to these students. These, these are cuts that they were, they will actually see and feel, and they have already been through enough this year. I think everyone is thinking short-term right now, when we need to be thinking of the long-term impacts. One of the many reductions will be to the necessary security officers that we have fought so hard to hire on a full-time basis in all of our schools. I wonder what the liability to the town would be if there was an incident. I am sure the financial impact to the town would be, would greater outweigh the minimal increase that is being requested. It is not safe, nor is it fiscally responsible, to reduce our security staff. The town of Watertown is ever-changing and growing by leaps and bounds. We now have issues of low income and school preparedness that are major challenges, and the needs and costs are high. We no longer, we are no longer a small town. There are 30% of our students on free or reduced lunch. There are also additional costs like testing, field trips, and sports that are also involved to fund these students. If you have children in the school system, it makes perfect sense to demand the funding needed for the best education. If you don't have children in the schools, you may think otherwise and are worried about the increase in your taxes. Good schools are the best economic development resource any town could have. People and companies will only move to town, will only stay in town if the schools can serve the children well. The value of your home is directly tied to the quality of schools in the town. If we let our schools deteriorate, deteriorate, we do it at the risk of losing value on our own property. Having highly-ranked schools adds value to your home if you ever decided to sell. Our success as a community depends on well-educated, high-quality workforce and the means investing in all students. Investments in Watertown students are investments in their future and ours. If we don't ensure they have quality schools, we deny, we deny far too many of them the opportunity to succeed, to succeed and to contribute to our town. Thank you.
Kathryn Camera, 31 Cottage Place. I'm going to break it up a little bit. I do fully support the Board of Education. I fully supported it before the $500,000 cut. I will vote yes, no matter what it is, because I certainly hope that there's not going to be any other cuts after we go to referendum. I listened carefully to the situation that the Board of Education is in, and I wish everyone else would have paid attention to that. I appreciate everybody's comments that have been made so far. But I am not going to support the town budget for a number of reasons. Starting with the fact that year after year, there's no formal line-by-line analysis performed by the council. And I cannot understand your rationale for much of what you spend. If the Board of Ed can use zero-based budgeting, why can't the town? I see so many areas where cuts can be made, and I question areas where more money is not appropriated. Our town manager's salary does not match his skills or education, and now we're including in the budget $20,000 for an intern for that department. I don't see any reason to increase any more money spent in that department, in that office. Watertown needs to support its students. Let another town hire college interns, because we can't afford it right now. We don't need an intern in the Planning and Zoning Office either. Right there, we would save $27,000. We need to help our students get ahead. College students are already well on their way. I question why our female fire marshal is still not being paid in line with other fire marshals in our state. How will the residents on Edgewood Avenue deal with a road collapse? Why doesn't the council itself cut corners on their line items? The council's budgeted $3,000 for training. What training? We already pay approximately $15,000 a year to the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Anything that the council wants to do would not be another expense there. We don't need to spend another $3,000. Why, why does the council have $12,000 budgeted for the, in their line item for special events? What special events? Cut it back, $500 if you need to buy flowers for something. $1,200 makes no sense. Right there, I've saved another $3,700 for a total of $30,000. How did the legal fees get budgeted when our town attorney hasn't, hasn't sent us an invoice since November? If he can perform work for the town, he can send us invoices. How could you budget with, with six months of unknown? I won't support the town budget until I see the council do the painstaking work of line-by-line analysis. I see far too many inconsistencies to believe that this is the best budget that can be presented to the residents of Watertown. Thank you.
Good evening. Kelly Lambert, 301 Oak Drive in Watertown. Once again, I am adding my voice to a public hearing regarding possible cuts to our school budget. During the past few years, fortunately, under the Board of Ed's guidance, our district has made great strides in funding. Their wisdom and forward thinking is evident in what I see as a parent, a taxpayer, and a community member. Yet we are here in unprecedented times, facing cuts that could set us back years and impact a generation of young people who are our future, a generation who needs our guidance more than ever. For the small benefit this $500,000 cut might have to taxpayers, the toll it will take on our children is tremendous. The years it may take to recoup are great. And for what savings do the residents? Two or three monthly Starbucks coffees? $500,000 spread among the town is not a huge savings for the cost it will have on our students' futures. My children have many more years in the school district, and I'm extremely concerned with the decision you are making tonight. Your decision could impact their daily lives for years to come, deciding how they will thrive in school, as well as their safety. I understand that we are in time of uncertainty with a reality that could not have been predicted. However, the need to cut classroom teachers and paraprofessionals is a step backward. Also, the Board of Ed will be forced to reduce security personnel hours. This is a huge mistake from a safety perspective and also causes distress to those who have come to depend on them as a social emotional component of their learning. Our children have grown accustomed to seeing their faces in the schools throughout the entire school day and forming bonds that are crucial to the health of our community. I can speak for my own twins at Polk School, who are very attached to Officer Tom, a much-needed role model during their time in school. In fact, my daughter used to be afraid to walk in the halls by herself. Her fear was that a school shooter would be in the hall when she was alone. Having a resource officer has helped her feel safe. Reducing security is not an option. I'm also concerned about the progress we have made as a district, implementing programs that provide much-needed skills for our young people, such as the classes devoted to trades at Watertown High School. We need to preserve what we have for the variety of learners in our district and give our students options and experiences. However, without funding, that is impossible. As many of you already know, when you enter public service as an elected official, you are serving all, not just the taxpayers in this town, but our youth as well. If this community seems to care as much about school issues as they have expressed publicly in the past six months, then it's time to put your money where your mouth is and support what is needed in our school district. Please consider avoiding an additional $500,000 cut to the Board of Education's budget. Allow the Board of Ed's original proposed figure to be put to referendum. We must move forward, not backward, especially in our current climate for our town's future. Thank you.
My name is Bernadette Bennett. I'm an employee, a mother, and a resident of Watertown my whole life. So I also am a paraprofessional at John Trumbull, and just on behalf of all of us, would like to just say something to the Board. Paraprofessionals have become so much more than just clerical assistants to the teachers. Our responsibilities have evolved, especially during this pandemic. We've become teachers' assistants, subbing both in the classroom and remotely. We've become cafeteria workers, delivering, serving, and monitoring the students during lunches in all areas of the building, including the classroom and the gyms. We've become valets, making sure your children are safe and efficiently put into their cars. We've become custodians, making sure the classrooms are clean, sanitized, and spacing is followed. We've become IT support, making sure the kids are able to log onto their Chromebooks so that they can learn and are ready. To sum it up, we are more than just great crafters, although we are awesome at that. We're here for your children when the teachers are doing what they do best, which is teaching. We're here for them during one of the most emotional and confusing times of their lives. We strive to keep the normalcy they've known or maybe have never experienced. So please, when considering excluding even one paraprofessional or any employee in the Education Department, keep the children and young adults in mind and how they rely on these support systems on a daily basis. They are our future, and they deserve better. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Christine Faresa, 24 Kimberly Lane. Thank you for your time tonight. I really appreciate an opportunity to speak, and I just want to say, as a parent in this town, and a taxpayer in this town, I empathize with the work that has been done and the work that continues to be done. It is a very difficult job everyone has to do to balance everyone's needs. I am the mother of a special needs child, and I have seen firsthand the skill, the caring, the work that goes on behind the scenes to take care of my son, who's at Polk School right now. He's 10 years old. This past year has been incredibly difficult on so many levels for everyone. I got to firsthand witness and see what our educators have had to go through, our paraprofessionals have had to go through, our speech therapists, our OT therapists, so many people in the school system. I acted as my son's paraprofessional during remote learning. It was not an easy thing in any way, shape, or form, and it really opened up my eyes to really truly what goes behind the scene, on behind the scenes, and the creativity of our educators. I am standing here urging a reconsideration of this $500,000 cut to the already threadbare budget. Our educators need the help and support, lessening the class sizes by reducing, or I should say, raising the class sizes by reducing the amount of teachers, reducing the amount of paraprofessionals that truly make a difference and help all of our students, not just our special needs population, but all of them to make a difference. When you think about the social, emotional well-being of our kids, how their routines have been changed so many times, they really need that support there to keep the work going and keep the education going. At this point, with everything that they've been through in this past year and continue to go through, because we all know sometimes remote learning pops up when you least expect it to, and we as parents have to figure out how to make that work. And it's not always easy when you have to be there to pay the bills. So my thought is, why are we trying to make it harder for our students, for educators? Our students are the backbone. Our education system is the backbone of this town. As somebody that spoke before me have mentioned, you have to, have to take care of the students. So I'm asking for that reconsideration, because significant cuts that affect class size, supports, supplies, and especially security in this day and age make absolutely no sense. So I ask for your reconsideration. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cara Major. My address is 91 Baldwin Street in Watertown. I am a parent of a third grader at Judson School and a member of the Judson School PTO. I am here tonight to voice my opinion regarding the latest budget cuts. As a parent, these cuts to our school is extremely concerning. This is the second time in four years I have been up here and tried to implore not to take any more money from our school system. The children and staff have had to sacrifice so much already this last year. How can we even consider taking more from them? We have asked so much from our teachers, paraprofessionals, secretaries, custodians, lunchroom workers, and school resource officers. We have asked them to care for our children in the most trying of times. They have not let us down. They have not. They have worked through a pandemic, risking their own health to make sure our children, the future of this town, do not fall behind. I understand these are tough choices. I do not envy any of you. What I can tell you is our children need you. They need you to stop asking them to give so much. They do not deserve this. They have lost so much this year. Please seriously consider what's being taken away. Some of the examples that were given was the inability to perch student workbooks. If the students do not have workbooks, the pages will have to be printed out on school paper. How much are we actually saving? Where will the paper come from if we're cutting all of our instructional supplies? Will parents have to add this to the list of supplies that they're already responsible for every year? The summer enrichment program will be gone. Many children need this program more than ever this year. We cannot let our students fall behind. Library book purchases will be cut by $4,000. My child last year took home books from Baldwin School that were printed in the 1960s. This is embarrassing. Our kids deserve so much more from us. And finally, the most important impact of reducing is reducing our wonderful staff. Class sizes will be increased 24 plus. How can we possibly keep children three feet apart? How many classes will be impacted by losing their teachers and paras? Every single job in our school is important. They're all part of the community that keep our children safe, happy, and educated. Now is the time to make this school district a priority. I want to have our school district be a leader in our state. I want Watertown to be recognized for excellence and not known for lack of funding and support of our students. Let's stand together and do what is best for our children and this community. They deserve at least that much. Thank you.
Could I ask if anyone else intends to speak? If you would raise your hand first, please. I'm thinking of the people that are watching us virtually. And if we still have a lot of in-house speakers, we could start doing every other one. But it appears we don't have a lot of in-house. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Al Nippel. I live on 95 Woodbine Avenue. I raised tonight to question the judgment of the town council. They proposed a reduction in the budget because I think they're afraid that the budget would pass. I urge them not to do that. Many people spoke more eloquently than I can tonight, but I think I represent the silent majority. I recently lost my job for COVID. I now live on a fixed income. I have no children in the school system, but I realize somebody paid for my education. So I'm willing to go the distance to pay for your children. And I would encourage anybody that I know to do that. If this town council puts back the money for the school system and puts back the money for the town sign. As a senior citizen, I need the fire department. I need them there when I need them. So I support them. I support the police department. I support everything else. I think the budget that was built by the superintendent and built by the town manager fits our needs and should be supported. Now, if they do that, it's incumbent upon the school system and the children, the parents of the children, to vote for the budget if they put it back the way it should be. That's exactly what has to happen. The number of votes wins. You have the people. If you go to the votes and vote, you can support the budget if they put it back the way it should be. Thank you.
I'll be quick. Lori Sinopietro. I am probably the newest para hire here. So I'm here to rally for my job that I love. I was hired as a one-on-one. I've had three different assignments since August. I was hired as a one-on-one with a medically special child who unfortunately ended up passing away. I wound up as a class from para. Not only did my medically challenged child need me, I saw another aspect of the just regular kids that needed extra help and who appreciated my help. Now, I came from 20 years in the medical field, not knowing what to expect in this job. Now I'm in the life skills room, totally another role, which I actually sort of fell in love with. So as your newest hire here, I think I've made a lot of new friends who help a lot of the special needs kids. There's kids in wheelchairs that can't reach around to get their Chromebook out, can't put their code on. So if you don't have us to even just do that simplest task, I don't know, you know, what to say. These are our children, your children possibly, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, brothers, sisters. My kids are in, one child's in the system still, one is out. They deserve to have people like us that care and want to help. So please reinstate the funds. I love my job. Thank you.
Could the administrator tell us if we have anyone virtually that is indicating the desire to address the hearing?
Madam Chair, we have one. Stacy, allow the mic to lower to talk at this time.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me okay? Sorry. Now I have my visual. Thank you so much. My name is Stacy Romano, 307 Neal Drive, Watertown. I am the parent of a fourth grade student at Judson Elementary School, as well as the treasurer of the PTO Board for Judson Elementary. Thank you for the opportunity to address the town council. I would like to start by saying that I live by the philosophy to assume positive intent. So I am hopeful that the town council simply didn't know the deep impact that the directive to reduce the school budget by an additional $500,000 would have on our children. Should this not be the case, I would like to share some of my thoughts. I appreciate the concern over increased taxes. I don't want to pay more either, but in no way can I justify underfunding the education of our children. We understand that these are extraordinary times. We have supported the difficult decisions that had to be made to create the school budget as it was originally presented. We have already asked our kids to go without sports, without graduations, without simple classroom community. We cannot ask them to give up basic necessities like safety and paper. There have to be other places to find the money that's needed. The 2,000-plus children who attend Watertown Schools are someone's children, grandchildren, nieces, and nephews, even if not your own. Reducing security at schools. Have we already forgotten the very real need to protect our children in the school environment? Every time I think about the lockdown drills our children have to endure and brought to tears. And to think that we are at a place in this town where saving a few dollars is worth the peace of mind that we have when we see the security staff at each building each day makes me very sad and left to think about whether this is a town whose values align with my own. The reduction in staffing and teaching support means bigger class sizes. Yes, that jeopardizes the level of individual attention and instruction for each child, but that also puts at risk the ability for many classrooms to function in person, given social distancing requirements. So fewer teachers equals bigger classes equals remote learning equals continued disengagement, loss of community, and the inability to keep up with grade level standards. Our bus routes, our children have fewer buses to drive them to and from school, which will increase transportation time. My daughter's bus route already takes between 30 and 40 minutes to get her home every afternoon after a long day of school in the heat and in the bitter cold. This makes for a difficult afternoon on a good day. But oh, classroom supplies. We're at the point where students can no longer pay, where schools, I'm sorry, can no longer pay for the paper necessary to run a school, never mind those nice-to-have items like pens and pencils and library books. But with this directive, this is where we are left with other cuts that I didn't even address in the interest of time. There are no more places to cut. Our school district operates on bare bones funding as it is. When you have to cut teachers, security staff, and buses, you know the superintendent and Board of Education are grasping at straws. There is nowhere left to go. I would like to applaud the town council members Jeff Demarest and Rachel Ryan for having had the courage to vote against this short-sighted decision. It's time for the town to decide what our goal is for Watertown's education system. Do we want our children to excel, get by, or fall behind? This budget lands us squarely in the fall behind category. We can and we should do better for our children. Please reconsider and reinstate the original school budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else?
Madam Chair, I see no more hands raised from the attendees. Last call for a hand raise is on the attendees. Madam Chair, I see no more attendees raise hands.
All right. We have heard all the comments, both from in-person and virtual. We will now take a 20-minute recess, and then we will reconvene the town council meeting that will set the figure to go to referendum.
Good evening, everyone. This is my 10th budget since getting in the town council in 2011. Over the years, I have always done my best to support our town and school budgets. At times, we made difficult cuts, not because we wanted to harm any particular area, but because we were forced to in the interest of keeping our taxes at bay. Tonight, we have a proposal that will cut a significant amount of money from both sides of our budget. Coming from a public safety background and witnessing the constant violence across our country, it does not sit well with me that we'll be eliminating our school security officers. This is a step in the wrong direction, especially since we worked so hard over the years to add these individuals in our schools to keep our kids safe. Additionally, this is a tremendous liability for our schools and town. The cost to restore the security officers back into our budget is approximately $70,000. I would like to see these funds restored, and I am happy to make the motion when the time is correct. I've said this a number of times. You cannot put a price tag on public safety, especially when it comes to our children. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Ryan, and as you heard from the last member of the town and her public participation, I opposed cutting the budget in any way. I am a teacher myself. I have two children. My son graduated from Watertown High School last year. It was in our special education program. I can't see her now, but I've been looking at Mrs. Mecca in the back of the room, and she spent many hours. My son spent many hours with Mrs. Mecca with her arm around him, and I don't think he would have gotten through John Tremble without her. And he also had a para with him through his entire time at the Judson School, and they were there for him when I could not be there. They were a mother to my son, and I cannot thank the women who helped my son enough. And so to see this budget and cutting paraprofessionals and impacting all students, I think is just completely wrong. I agree with all the sentiments that everybody said today, and I will be voting to restore the money if given the opportunity.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everybody, for participating, those of you that spoke. I really personally very much appreciate your personal stories and your views on this subject. I can hear in a lot of your voices and how this means to you. It means as much to me as well. I have kids in the school system as well, and I know the paramount importance of making sure that they receive an education that is worthy of Watertown. And I believe that this cut is unworthy of what they need to have. I think it's very important for us, all of us, to remember that every dollar we cut from them is a dollar that does not get spent for their future. Their future is the future of our town. When we look at them, whether they're in kindergarten or seniors in high school, those are the future residents, the future citizens of our town. We've had a lot of discussion in the past several months about Watertown pride and what pride means. Well, this is pride. Pride is making sure that our schools are properly funded. Pride is making sure that the quality of the education they get is worthy of the town they live in. And from an economic standpoint, we're not talking about a choice between raising the mill rate or lowering the mill rate. We're talking about a choice where the mill rate is going up. It's whether or not those taxes do nothing for you except be less, or they get you something. They provide an adequately funded school system. And the school system is the heart and soul of a town, more so than any other aspect, because that is what attracts people to our town. That is what is the seeds for our future. So as far as, and this is my personal opinion for me only, and I'm speaking for myself here, as far as this cut, I will not vote to support this cut under any circumstances whatsoever. I thank you. You have my time.
So my comments are really questions toward the board. Hold nice and close. Okay. Either the chair or the superintendent. I know with the town budget this year, a lot of our increases were based on having 53 pay weeks versus a normal 52. Does that affect the Board of Ed as well this year? Or is there the timing different than the rest of the town? Do you know offhand?
At this point, that is not a factor for our payroll cycle um as we move through this fiscal year or next year's either. Thank you.
Okay, um, the remainder of my questions will mainly be based on the email from Leslie um related to the superintendent's um suggested cuts to go with that five hundred thousand that's in place now. Um, under the security guards, are those the resource, resource officers or is that a different position than the resource officers?
It is a different position. So our, our resource officers, uh, Chris Donston and Jeff DeSina are um taken care of by our police department here in town. And they are at the middle school and the high school. Our three security officers are retired um police officers who work full time in our elementary and our primary school.
Thank you. Um, on the email, under the section one, you list out the different positions that would be cut if this uh five hundred thousand dollar cut um stayed in place. Are those all positions that are currently filled as in someone would be laid off? Or is a mix of current employees and positions that you wanted to fill that you wouldn't be able to fill?
Thank you. The positions that are in the five hundred thousand dollar cut are all filled positions at this time. So there is a, a face behind each one of those.
And to follow up with that question, the one HR specialist, is that position that's currently filled or is that one that was going to be added?
It is partially filled at this time by somebody that we outsource um at advance.
Okay, so it's consulting versus a employee.
Correct. In the um, just so that you have full disclosure, in the initial cuts of eight hundred and fifteen thousand to bring it to a four percent increase, there was one custodian that is currently not filled uh that will then just continue to be vacant.
Um, going on to section two of that email, which has cuts to instructional supplies, custodial supplies, substitutes, so on and so forth. Um, got roughly a hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars there, plus a couple other line items for library books, summer enrichment. So roughly two hundred thousand dollars um of the five hundred thousand dollars is in theory is coming from these different line items. Which would leave roughly three hundred thousand for the employee side of it. And with twelve and a half positions, I mean, I don't know what each position costs, but even if it was forty thousand, including benefits, um, I feel like all those cuts plus all the cuts mentioned to supplies, et cetera, would be well above the five hundred thousand mark. Um, if those twelve and a half positions were only um make up three hundred thousand, that means the average cost per employee is only twenty four thousand, which seems a little on the low side. So how, I'm, I'm just trying to reconcile those numbers.
Of course, sure. So I'll try my best to speak to um all of the numbers that you just mentioned now. And if I miss something, you can just let me know and I'll follow up with it again. So um depending on what the position is, there is obviously a range of what the salary and the benefits are. Um, when we get to positions of teachers, um, their salaries are greater than those in the custodial or the secretarial or the paraprofessional union. Um, so at this point in time, when you see the reduction in paraprofessionals, that is a lower number that also includes benefits if they are taking benefits. Uh, when you see the teachers' numbers, you, you will see that they are higher and I'm, I'm, I'm not giving an exact figure, but I can, if you'd like me to, with the salary grids. They also include the benefits as well. Um, we did do a pretty accurate and close to the number um computation here. So these numbers do reflect what it would be, um, even though it may seem like it's higher, um, it, it's not quite. This is where it is.
That um are related to employees. Um, every year with Board of Ed or any business, for the most part, you have employees that retire, people that leave for other reasons. You'll get new employees to fill those positions. More times than not, possibly someone younger, lower rate, things of that nature. Um, is there, in the current budget, is there an estimate in there related to that change? Or is that estimate kind of held back because it's still unknown?
Certainly. So at this point in time, we don't have any actual resignations or retirements that have come across to our, our desk. Um, every year, our school district, um, including all school districts out there, uh, do take the, I guess, the actuarial risk of factoring in possible retirements and um possible resignations and or people finding other positions elsewhere. Uh, we are on the more conservative side, um, just because we have had uh in the past few years a fair number of uh not resignations, but retirements and movement. And so to think that we will continue to have that movement year after year after year, the, the possibility does reduce. So we were on the more conservative side. It is not factored in at this point um in terms of giving any of the people who are on this list to be cut, any assurances that they would be guaranteed a position next year if that movement started to happen. Um, but certainly life does happen. And when that does happen, um, based on our contractual language, we have a recall protocol on how um those employees would come back to the district.
Anyone on the Board of Ed side want to make a statement? Any Board of Ed member?
Madam Chair. Um, first of all, I want to thank everybody that uh came out tonight um to, to, to voice such passionate responses. Let's be realistic. This is a business, right? We have to manage expenses. And I think that the board over the years have been good stewards of the taxpayers' money. Our public schools are the largest single asset in this, in this town. And by that, I mean, it's our people. It's our teachers, our administrators, our pairs, our custodians, our secretaries and everybody else. Okay, it's our children. They are the product of our business. We have our buildings. It's brick and mortar. How many people here own a home? You gotta mow the lawn. You gotta fix the roof. You gotta clean the gutters, right? We're not asking to build new facilities. We're asking to try and maintain what we have so that the people within our district, the people that we entrust with our children can keep doing what they do best and not worry about what's going to get cut next. Our goal is to find a way to move forward so that we can grow our public schools, right? So that we can continue to create a product in our children that we will continue to be proud of. Socially, emotionally, academically. That's what we're trying to accomplish. And I want to close by thanking the town council. We are living in unprecedented times, right? We're all public servants. I think we all know what we want to do. The, the challenge is how do we get there, right? Money doesn't grow on trees. How many people haven't gotten a raise this year, last year? Okay, how many is it? How many have had their expenses go up? Their challenges. So I just want to thank the, the, the town council um for being good partners, for um being strong representatives for our town and for listening uh and taking into consideration everything that they've heard tonight. Thank you.
Going to take a twenty minute recess and then reconvene these special town council meeting to set the figures. Being uh Wednesday, April twenty first to order, which is the meeting immediately following the public hearing. The next is the pledge of allegiance. Do we have a flag? Can we have roll call for the council, please? Here.
Anthony DeBona here.
Anthony's here virtually.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is a consideration of the budgets for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two year. Consideration means does any council person wish to say anything further with regard to the hearing comment? Okay, we are um looking to restore a hundred and fifty thousand to the school department and ninety thousand to the town side. The town side would be to the vehicle replacement fund uh for the two departments that had cuts. The school department, we understand uh will relook at the security and teaching positions with a hundred and fifty and see what they can do. Do we have a motion?
I move to make the following changes to the budget as presented at public hearing. Which kind of mirror what Ma- Marianne said, uh, thirty five thousand dollars being restored to the Public Works Highway Department for the replacement fund and fifty five thousand dollars to the um fire department's vehicle replacement fund, then a hundred and fifty thousand to the Board of Ed. I move to approve the following budgets to be sent to referendum. Town general fund, thirty one million, seven hundred and twenty five thousand, ninety eight dollars. School general fund, forty eight million, eighty nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty three dollars for a total general fund of, of seventy nine million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty one dollars. Town road aid, three hundred and forty nine thousand, nine dollars. Water operations, one million, seven hundred and ninety one thousand, seven hundred and fifty five dollars. Water capital, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Sewer operations, one million, eight hundred and sixty two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. Sewer capital, a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Water and sewer debt, three hundred and nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Crest Brook golf operations, seven hundred and twenty seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Local capital improvement fund, a hundred and fifty three thousand, forty one dollars. Debt service fund, three hundred and fifty nine thousand, six hundred and twenty eight dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Would anyone like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just uh two questions first. Um, the thirty five thousand of Public Works, what would that be uh going to specifically? Vehicle replacement and the fire department fifty five thousand to the vehicle replacements, so both the vehicle replacement. Okay. I see that the adjustment was made to restore one hundred and fifty of the five hundred thousand dollars. In my view, I think that uh that's not quite enough. I can't myself look at into the eyes of uh people that are going to lose their jobs and say that it's more important to replace vehicles imminently than to maintain their employment. I do think that those vehicles are important. I've advocated replacing the fire uh, the fire ladder, for example. And I think it's very important that we do have equipment that's functional and working and up to date. But I also think that the positions we're talking about eliminating are important to our kids and important to our school system. I would think then if it's necessary, if we feel that the, that the funds for the vehicle replacement is vital, then we include that with the restoration of the five hundred thousand dollars. Otherwise, I still think the five hundred thousand dollars needs to be the priority. Going forward, looking at next year, we're going to be looking down the same law, the same problem, only it'll be larger. Only it'll be more embraciable and will require further tax increases. I go back to my original discussion about this. That we're talking about increasing taxes for a purpose that is absolutely necessary for our students. Everybody here that showed testimonials told us to us exactly how important these uh, these cuts would be to our school system. The restoration of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which I believe includes the security guards is great, but it, what happens with the students that rely on the parents that are getting cut? What happens to those parents who are losing their jobs? For me personally, I, I just can't uh, I can't face making that decision and, and saying that equipment right at this moment, at this time is more important than their livelihoods and the dependence that their students have on them. Thank you.
I echo all of Jeff's comments and I just want to say that uh the reason why we have this town meeting, it goes back to the very beginning of the United States and the concept of direct democracy in New England town meetings where citizens get to have their say and get to tell their elected representatives what they want. And that's what we are on this stage are your representatives. And I sat in that audience uh for many of these meetings myself and spoke at the podium about my own children's experiences. And that's why I ran for town council was to be your representative. Uh, and it is very clear that the voices in this room have spoken and they want the five hundred thousand dollars put back into the budget. Uh, no one came here and spoke about worrying about their taxes being increased. If they want to speak on that, they can go to the budget referendum and vote. It's certainly a lot easier to go and vote than it is to come and sit here in a three hour long meeting. And so I think it's very important for us as our representatives not to give a token a hundred and fifty thousand dollars back to the school board. And certainly it's very important for the jobs that'll be reinstated, but it's not good enough. And I think that it is our obligation to listen to the people who are here, who have spoken, put that money back in and then let the voters decide at the referendum process. That's why we have the process that we do. Thank you.
Just want to make a couple of quick comments. Um, as far as the hundred and fifty thousand dollars going back for the uh school budget. Um, yeah, it was mentioned uh the the security, not the professionals. I just want to remind everyone that it's up to the superintendent and the Board of Ed to decide exactly how that hundred and fifty thousand spent. Um, in addition, as far as employees over vehicles, also keep in mind that us setting money aside is literally putting money into a savings account. It's not us going out and buying those trucks right now. It's setting money aside so that we don't have to budget an even higher amount in another year or two when those trucks are, do need to be replaced. And that's all I got to say at the moment.
I would like to comment. I've been an education supporter for fifty years. I spent sixteen years on the Board of Ed and I fought tooth and nail for every dime that we could give them. But unfortunately, as we sit up here, we not only represent parents and students, we represent the whole community, which a large portion of which are senior citizens, which are people that have lost their jobs because of COVID and some that are even losing their homes or their businesses. We're trying to balance everything, keeping in mind that people can only afford so much more in taxes. You can't equate taxes to children's needs. I understand that. But unfortunately, that's the job we were given. And we don't get to decide as council members line items in the Board of Ed budget. We only get to look at the dollar line at the bottom. So it's not easy to make a cut of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not easy to cut what we've cut from the town side either, knowing the roads and the other issues that we have in town that need attention. But trying to be realistic for all people, those employed, those unemployed, senior citizens and parents. This is the number that we're hoping will pass at referendum. If it does not, we'll have to look at all. If it does not, we'll have to look at all again. So everyone having spoken, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All right, all those in favor, please raise your hands so that the secretary can see. Those opposed. Everyone has voted. I can't see the end, but it is. Anthony is a yes. Motion passes.
I move to approve the referendum notice for the machine vote on the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budgets as follows. The referendum of electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meeting of the town of Watertown will be held on Tuesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, between the hours of six AM and eight PM to vote for the approval or disapproval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budgets. Voting will be at the following polling places. Voting District sixty-eight dash zero one, Watertown High School. Three-two-four French Street, Watertown, Connecticut. Voting District sixty-eight dash zero two, Judson School. One-two-four Hamilton Lane, Watertown, Connecticut. Voting District sixty-eight dash zero three, Swift Middle School. Two-fifty Colonial Street, Oakville, Connecticut. Voting District sixty-eight dash zero four, Polk School. Four-thirty-seven Buckingham Street, Oakville, Connecticut. Persons qualified to vote in town meeting who are not electors shall vote at the office of the Register, sixty-one Echo Lake Road, which is the former Hemingway Park School, Watertown, Connecticut. Absentee ballots may be, maybe obtained at the Town Clerk's Office.
Do we have a second for that motion? Anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Anyone abstaining? I couldn't see everyone's hand. Was it, was unanimous? Vote passes unanimously. Can we move on to the last motion?
I move that the budget questions be placed on the voting machine as follows. Number one, shall the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two town general budget be approved in the amount thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, sorry, thirty-one million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, ninety-eight dollars? And shall the following fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budgets be approved in the amounts of Town Road Aid, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine dollars. Water Operations, one million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Water Capital Fund, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Sewer Operations, one million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred, nine hundred and five dollars. Sewer Capital, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Water and Sewer Debt, three hundred and nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Chris Brook Golf Operations, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Local Capital Improvement, a hundred and fifty-three thousand, forty-one dollars. Debt Service Fund, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Is there a second to that motion?
Motion continues. Number two, shall the fiscal year, right? Keep them combined. Number two, shall the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school budget, sorry, School General Fund Budget be approved in the amount of forty-eight million, eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars? Voters approving each question will vote yes, and those opposing each question will vote no.
Okay, now is there a second? Is there anyone that has a question or a comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Is there anyone opposed? One in opposition. Anyone abstaining? No abstentions. The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those in favor?